States of America, and consider the republic which is theirs. One nation, united in heaven, indivisible, the liberty of each and every citizen.
Mandy, could you please call a roll?
Deion.
Here.
Raynor Hall.
Here.
Paul Grub.
Here.
Carl Stone.
Here.
Ian Straylon.
Here.
Carl Stone.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of the ten and ten with any?
So.
For Brandon Horace and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, next item that I am going to appoint myself uh to serve on the South Central Regional Airborne Agency Board. The SCRAA is a separate legal entity governed by a board of directors comprised of three members appointed by the City of Pella and two members appointed by the City of Oskaloosa. Approved, I would assume, the remainder of the vacant term, which would expire on April one, twenty twenty seven. May I motion for approval?
So.
For Brandon Horace and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would also like to appoint Mark Deion to fill the vacant stand on the South Central Regional Airborne Agency Board. If approved, Mark would assume the remainder of the vacant term, which would expire on April one, twenty twenty seven. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
For Brandon Horace and Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Deion.
Epstein.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address counts regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and please manage your comments for three minutes.
I'm Detective Attorney Lieutenant Seventeen, Vivock Park Road here in Pella. Uh, representing myself and the Friends of the Pella Community Center. Just wanted to say thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Lynn, for working today at a partnership agreement. Uh, the partnership agreement between the city and the Friends of the Pella Community Center. Uh, you may find it a little vague, and that's because we don't yet have all the details we know for what the cost will be or what the schedule will be. In a sense, I look at it more as a letter of intent by both the city and the Friends of the Pella Community Center. Uh, we are looking to renovate, to preserve, to renovate, and to enhance the community center. We're committing ourselves to that. This letter, this letter, this partnership agreement will be finalized and amended. As we get farther into the project, we know what the costs are. So don't be alarmed by that. And again, thank you for your support on this. I'd like to let you know that at this point, we've raised a little over eight hundred thousand dollars for the renovation of that community center. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ron Haynes, fourteen thirty-one Broadway. Uh, just a quick question. The lot across from Central Tire, is that where T-Mobile and Starbucks is going?
To the west?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yep.
Well, my question is.
That's where the building is.
My question is, why isn't it low? And are you one of the investors in that, Mr. Mayor?
I am not.
No, you're not?
Okay.
Somebody told me it was, and I wanted to clear that up.
Oh, surprise, surprise. Uh, he said, "Oh, yeah."
I just wanted to know why, why it's not low, because isn't there a, a limit of how, how, uh, how tall weeds and whatever have to be?
Yeah, we have a compliance team that watches those kinds of things.
Okay.
James Chitty, Earl's on it, we'll, we'll, we'll look into your concerns.
Okay. All right, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? So. For Deion and Strylan. Any, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving into a public hearing regarding Union Street Reconstruction Project bids, Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a great PowerPoint on this item. And as Mayor Ward stated this evening, what we're actually entertaining is the Union Street Reconstruction Project. Specifically what this resolution would do, what approved plans and specifications, as well as assess the engineer's estimates to cost, and ultimately assess bids and awards the project contract for Union Street. Now, the segment that we're talking about on Union Street, the orange highlighted segment up here on the board is just east and east third. And here it extends out to Morey's Side Drive. And we have a description of the project up here as well. Denny, is there anything you can add to the project description for council?
You know, there really is, and I see, my bad. We, we now, this project will include the entire intersection of East Third and Union. And that was also caused part of the price and the cost of the project. As we did the preliminary survey, we've had trouble for years on that four hundred feet sewer, where we commonly go jet it, and our three-four homeowners also have their own problems. There's some bellies in it, but it was, it barely had like an inch of fall in the block. So fortunately, Third Street is extremely steep, and so we were able to go around the corner, I don't know, thirty-five feet, to gain the fault that's needed for, for an eight or ten inch pipe. So that's a reason for the cost going up, and that map's in here. It actually puts that entire intersection out. We have to take it out before we're just sneaking out to the manhole and calling it good.
All righty. Mandy, let's go ahead with the presentation. Now, as far as bids were concerned, we received several, oh, actually not several, a few competitive bids on June sixth. Garden and Associates was the engineer for the project, and they're recommending awarding it to the lowest responsible bidder, which in this case was to keep Bay County Green, and they bid a thousand four hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. It is important to note that this is below the engineer's estimate, which is just shy of five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, but it's above our construction budget that we have for the project, approximately a hundred forty-five thousand dollars or greater. We believe that council were to proceed, which we're recommending proceeding with the project this evening, but we want to state, just as we get into two thousand and twenty-six, or fiscal year twenty-six budget preparations, there may be some modifications necessary for this free budget in twenty-six to accommodate this project and the overage on this project. Now, council order approved this resolution this evening. We'd issued a notice to proceed, and it would be issued by July first of this year. The project completion date is sixty-five, fourteen days, so sometime this fall on the project. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Okay. Counsel, any comments, questions?
This, this is going to be a wonderful improvement, Denny. Thank you.
Yeah, we talked about this for a little while.
Yeah, five years, but it's counting.
Of course, it went in the street from eighteen to twenty-five. That'll get major improved.
Yeah.
A lot of people cut through there.
Thank you for your persistence on this.
So for those that have, this is one of those areas that tends to back up.
Mm-hmm.
Hasn't been talked about a lot in my view this year, so.
Yes.
We've been doing it for five.
Yeah.
So, well worth, uh, review.
Anthony, yes.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Anybody out there want to make a comment about this project? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Move.
Support.
Deion, Brandon Horace, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. So now we move on to the resolution number sixty-seven, ten, resolution entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving Bids, and Making Award Contract for the Union Street Reconstruction Project. Any, Mike?
I don't have any.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So.
For Brandon Horace, Deion, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to a public hearing on the operation, authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation on the city they're under. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board. And as Mayor Ward stated, this resolution actually would do accomplish with instructing beginning proceedings on the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, as background on this, this item, in two thousand and twenty-three, we had unexpected repairs to the city's oil system. This bond issue is intended to replenish the city's cash reserves on the amounts that we expended with the oil system on this, uh, for those repairs in two thousand and twenty-three. Now, we'd like to mention, again, with the bond issue that we're talking about this evening, what you're really authorizing is to begin the proceedings on, on the matter. Council approves this resolution, and we actually schedule a closing and a final approval on the bond issue that would occur in August of this year. But the amount would be eight hundred thousand, won't be closer to closing time. The amount of the bond issue will be determined at that time. But for now, it's not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars on this. Now, it is important to note, even though we're issuing general obligation bonds on, on the matter, and that they do have the ability to issue a debt service levy if we choose to, these amounts will be abated or retired, I should say, with this, with the water utilities. So we're going to secure by water revenue on this as well. And the reason why we're doing this is we believe that the interest rate for the general obligation bonds will be lower than if we were to issue just a straight revenue bond issue that was secured only by the water revenue pledge as well. So with that, again, all we're doing, not all we're doing, but we're instituting proceedings as this resolution approves. Closing would occur in August. At that time, we'd have a proposed bond sale along with interest rates on this and a final amount. And once again, that would occur, you know. So with that, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel? Anyone out there with a comment, question? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So.
Support.
And Strylan, Deion, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to the resolution number six, seven, one, one, entitled Resolution Instituting Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Issuance of Not to Exceed Eight Hundred Thousand Dollar General Obligation Capital Loan Notes. Do I have a motion for approval? So. Deion, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six, seven, one, two, entitled Resolution Adopting Amendment to Wage Scale and Job Classification Structure. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do was adopt the amended wage scale for the city's employees that would be effective July first of this year. Now, as background, in two thousand and twenty-two, we had a compensation review study performed by Condray Associates. But Condray at the time recommended to keep the scale current with the market conditions. Those annual market adjustment utilized in the Employment Cost Index. Now, when we talk about the Employment Cost Index, it's important to note, as of March twenty-first, the rolling twelve-month average is just at five percent. The index measures both what we consider cost of living, what we're considering this evening, as well as step increases. So the total wage increases was five percent. What's being proposed with the city's merit system, we're considering this evening, is just cost of living adjustments. But it's also important to note that each one of the pay grades, there's going to be proposed fourteen steps that are about three percent a key part in, in that as well. Employees that have satisfactory reviews and exceed performance reviews on this are also eligible for step increases with that. So with this, what is being proposed is a two percent across-the-board wage scale in addition to the step increases, which means roughly, uh, most of our employees will receive roughly a five percent increase, which matches the Employment Cost Index as well. If council were to approve of this request this evening, we have for the city's pay plan roughly three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars budgeted for pay increases for city staff for two thousand and twenty-five. Now, as an important item that we did have, and we talked about this during the budget work sessions, there was a concern with some employees, not some employees, but there's roughly thirteen employees, I believe, that are at the top of the city's wage scale. With that, what council specifically was concerned was that we're dealing with some extraordinary times in terms of inflation on this as well, and the employees at the top of the scale would not be resellable for a step increase. So what's included with this item, Manny, let's go ahead, is a proposal to increase the wage scale from twelve to fourteen steps. These two additional steps are estimated cost no more than thirty-four thousand dollars. Now, from city administration's staff, uh, recommendation or point of view, I should say, on this, is we view this as really a short-term solution. And the reason why they're saying this is a short-term solution to address the issue is what's usually recommended is review your compensation plan about every four to five years. We were to back up and apply that in real time, we should be reviewing the city's employment compensation or compensation plan in the next fiscal year that would start on July first, two thousand and twenty-five. And so with these two additional steps, this addresses the employees that are currently at top of scale. They wouldn't be eligible for merit increases and step increases upon, upon acceptable review. So Manny, let's go ahead, please. I believe I've, I've covered this. So again, we will be, during the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget process, we will be making a recommendation to the mayor and council to once again review the city's pay plan. But until that time, we're expanding the scale from twelve to fourteen steps. So the theory is, is over two years, leading up to the review, all employees would be eligible for step increases for the city workforce. We're going to look at the pay plan again. And in addition, we talked about previously, if there are any adjustments with the pay plan, we'll take some communication, particularly to those employees that will be at top of scale potentially as the plan do that. So again, to summarize, this approves a two percent across-the-board wage increase for the city workforce staff. It also expands the scale from twelve to fourteen steps, and each step is approximately a three percent wage increase. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation on the side of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
For Brandon Horace, Horace Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number sixty-seven, thirteen, entitled Resolution Approving Preliminary, Preliminary Plaid for Fountain Hills Platform Subdivision. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're considering this evening is the preliminary plaid for the Fountain Hills subdivision. This would be a little addition to Fountain Hills subdivision. Important to note, and the council aware of this, but for members in the audience, and those watching at home on Pella Fiber, there's two types of plaid we often consider. One of them is the preliminary plaid, and what that talks about is the overall game plan for the development. So generally, this is, reflects what happens with the subdivision or what's being proposed, that full build-out for the plaid. It also includes the public infrastructure that's proposed for the development as well. Now likewise, often developments are done in phases, and at that time, once the infrastructure, portion of the infrastructure is completed, we usually entertain a final plaid from the developer, and that's used for reporting purposes at Marion County, et cetera, and it actually divides the lots. So that's the final plaid. Tonight, we're talking about the preliminary plaid, and that's the overall game plan for the development. So what's being proposed is a thirty-one acre preliminary plaid that actually has proposed forty-seven billable lots on this. Now, this property is located just north of the existing Fountain Hills development that we have up here. It's in this yellow highlighted area right up here. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the intention of the development is to provide for single-family housing on this as well. And as a result of this lot, or the proposed plaid meets all the requirements for R-one, the existing zoning district that the property is located in. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as our finding, if you were to look at the code requirements from what we're required to approve with preliminary plaid, is not only that the plaid meets the subdivision ordinance in the zoning code, but it also conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. Based on our review of the city's comprehensive plan, housing was a key strategic priority for the city. This particular plaid actually aligns both from a strategic priority standpoint and also the future plan map as well. So with that, our, we believe, the plaid as submitted meets, is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. It's important to note, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this plaid during their main twenty-eighth meeting, and staff is recommending approval this evening. So, um, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Move. Deion Carl Stone, any discussion?
On the first map, the red line, is that the city limit boundary that, that jogged around there?
I believe so, yes.
And so all of this new addition, how far north does the city limit go? Just to the top?
This, this plaid is within the city limits.
Do we have to add that, or that's just?
That's, that's currently within the city limits.
Okay.
So, no, no change. All right.
Anything else? All right. We'll vote, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Butler.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number sixty-seven, fourteen, entitled Resolution Approving Preliminary Plaid for Prairie Ridge Townhome Subdivision. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Very similar request for the Prairie Ridge Townhome Subdivision. Disorientate everyone. The new Five Field Road extension down here, here to look down here, Washington Street is right down here. Chick-fil-A is relocated right over here. Five Field Road extends out, and this is the new Prairie Ridge Housing Subdivision. What's being proposed is the townhome portion of the subdivision, and what the developer is proposing is to build in this yellow highlighted area, thirty-eight billable lots that would be for the townhome portion of the development. Now, before we go on, I thought it'd be a good, uh, idea, in fact, we've provided this update to the Marion County Supervisors as well, just to give an update on the Prairie Ridge subdivision, um, on it. As council's aware, this subdivision, I believe, entails or contains ninety-two single-family lots. As of today, we've issued seventy-seven building permits, and we have a tax, and we have an estimated valuation of just shy of twenty-four million dollars at the, at the subdivision. If you're looking at the homes on there from our housing applications, I believe that that is just over, is north of three hundred thousand dollars for the typical home that we have listed out here on our housing applications, according to our records. Now, with that, it is important to note, as the developers inform me, that the rest of the lots on Prairie Ridge have been sold. On it, they anticipate issuing the remaining building permits, yet this also Prairie Ridge is completely built out on it as well. And so with this, the seventy-seven lots and the ninety-two that we have on it, it's been very successful to date on this. Now, as far as the projections that we had, and like, and this when we got into the Prairie Ridge development, we actually thought as of this December, so this would be December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, when we originally did the projections for the development, that we would have forty-six homes constructed by then. So we're way ahead of schedule on the single-family side of things. The townhome portion, uh, being proposed, has the developers thirty-eight billable lots, and I believe they're looking at somewhere right around twenty units initial, with the initial construction. Um, and still need all the phases on this as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. We do have the preliminary lot, uh, layout that we have here. Now, it is important to note that the preliminary plaid does meet all the requirements for the planned unit developments. When council approved the Prairie Ridge development, we approved, we rezoned the property that was suitable for the townhome development. This applies with the city's zoning ordinance. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, based on our review with this, we believe the proposed plaid meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance as well as the city zoning code. Council has previously rezoned this property, and at the time made a finding that the property applied or was in performance, proposed development was in performance of the city's comprehensive plan. We still believe that is the case as well, and as a result, we are recommending approval of the plaid estimated this evening. It's important to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this plaid as well at the main twenty-eighth meeting.
Great.
I believe that concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
For Brandon Horace, of course, Carl Stone. Any discussion, questions?
I'm going to feel a big need in this community. Very grateful.
Builder, do we know much about Greenland Homes, I see that's who's going to do that?
Um, the developer I see is in, in the office, uh, in the tent this evening. He's, he's, would you like to address that question?
Yeah. Yeah, if you could, just sorry I've been here. Casey Shaifbo with ATI Group. I am not, I'm not exactly sure where they rank as far as the largest home builder in the metro, but Greenland Homes builds a lot of homes in the Des Moines area. They are a pretty major buyer of single-family lots from us, uh, so they have a lot of experience. They've built a lot of these townhomes.
Just try to be aware of our startup out there. Just want to be sure we have a, go to follow the flag of that.
Yep.
Thanks for that, Casey.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Raynor Hall.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yep.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, seven, one, five, entitled Resolution Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on Proposal to Convey Certain Real Property Legally Described as Lots Thirty-seven Through Forty-three in Scultic Heights, in addition to the City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa, at the Pella Golf and Country Club. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Ward stated, really what the council's entertaining this evening is simply setting July second as a Monday thirty-eight order, proposed sale of excess city property, which lets the Pella Golf and Country Club. Now, the property that we're talking about, probably will be proposing itself, is this property that's located this orange highlighted area, the Pella Golf and Country Club is right up here. As you can see, their parking lot is currently within the city right away of the excess property that we have on it. Now, as far as excess property at the city of Pella, our policy is up late to sales for fifty cents per, per foot. Plus, we also ask the parties that are interested in buying this or requesting to buy the property that they cover the city's legal fees and advertising, advertising fees as well for the public hearing. So this proposed sale price, the forty-nine thousand per foot parcel, would be just right around twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars plus legal fees on this as well. Once again, with this resolution, we do support it simply establishing July second as the public hearing date for this item. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? So. For Deion and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, and please call a roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Hall.
Yeah.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, seven, one, six, entitled Resolution Approving Ordering Preparation of Plans and Specifications, Form of Contract, Notice of Hearing, and Notice of Setting Date for Public Hearing, Authorizing and Taking Bids, and Authorizing Bid Opening for the Tulip Horn Renovation Project. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Ward stated, um, this proposed project is a renovation to the Tulip Horn. What this resolution really does, this establishes August sixth as the public hearing date for the project, and also authorize the staff to see bids for the project as well. Now, I'm going to ask our Community Services Director, Mr. Jeffon, to please kind of describe the project, council, or give a summary of what's being proposed as far as repairs to the Tulip Horn.
Sure, thanks, Mike. So the project, um, addresses a number of, of both aesthetic and some structural, um, concerns with the facility. Uh, in the basement, we've had, um, concretes will lock one of the main beams, and that's due to the, the mark of the rusting underneath there, so we'll address that. to the mark that are rusting underneath there, so we'll address that. At the base of each tower, there's some concrete slabs that have some couple inches over the years, so those will be pulled out, will be compact and formed in concrete, and the whole tower, the whole structure will get cleaned and seen, we are replacing all of the joint sealant as well. And then on the upper portion, where the bridge is between the two towers, there's quite a bit of rust up there that needs to be cleaned off, and just some of those features need to be tidied up and repainted. And then lastly, down at the bottom, we have a lot of water infiltration into the basement of the Tulip Horn, and so it's been recommended to remove all of the plantings around the base of it, replace that with concrete that's slipped away from the structure to keep, to keep it from getting so damp in the basement. And we do have stories down there, there's electrical down there, the sound system is down there, so we're really looking at trying to button that up a little bit.
Is, does anything in the way of lighting need to be addressed?
Not at this time.
I don't know if you're asking a question.
Yep.
All right, let's go ahead with the presentation. Now, as far as the project engineering, on the project, it's Tom Kitch. There's the same firm, if the council recalls, maybe as I look over the council members, I know council member DeYoung was on the council at the time, it's the same engineer that handled the Boss Land Conference Center repairs, the structural repairs at the Boss Land Conference Center. So we used, utilized Tom Kitch before. Other opinion, a probable construction cost is just at three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Council order approved this resolution, we conducted bid letting on July twenty fourth for the project, and assuming that we received it, except well, at that time, the August sixth is the public hearing date, and at that time, we'd also be considering a construction contract for the project as well. Now, we targeted November twenty fourth as the final citation date for the project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation on this side.
All right, thank you, Mike and Jeanette. Can I get a motion for approval?
No.
Young and Striley, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may I, please call roll?
DeYoung.
Yes.
Young Striley.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Father.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval to pay abstract the bills number twenty one fifty three?
Move to approve initial warrants.
For Brandon Horst and Striley, any discussion or questions?
Mowing costs a lot of money this time of year, doesn't it?
It won't anymore if it doesn't rain. The grass is dying rapidly. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may I, please call roll?
Raynor.
Yes.
Young Striley.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Father.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like us to address this evening? Any member of the public have any other business that you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please step forward with a microphone, state your name and address, try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Yeah, I'm Jerry, Jerry Rose of Pella, Marjorie Judy. We're near the two nineteen University Street, right next to Cockville Park, and right next to the pond, real close to it. We use the park a lot, especially with two of our grandkids, six and four, use the playground many times, and it's been a mud pit until this week, we finally got a little different cellar dust come in, so that helped a lot. But the main thing is the pond itself, it's used by a lot of fishermen, a lot of little kids fish, and the wire baskets around it, I wanted to do two or eight, they had rocks in them, most of the rocks are thrown into the, into the pond by the kids, the kids love to throw rocks, so they're about half empty anymore. So I think it'd be nice to have a cement area to put around it, and that part. Also, it'd be dredged out, getting, for sure, quite full of mud, to see that cleaned up that way. But mainly, the water, when it gets a little slow and snipe, it's, it's a very slime on it, which is very offensive odor and stink, and where you just, stones go from it, so therefore, we get some of that coming our way. So it'd be nice to have these things addressed, the park is used a lot, and I think it's kind of overlooked, so might keep this in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Emily Duffy. I've got something I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I just needed some clarification. Okay, yes, can you, yes. With regards to the sale of lots, resolution sixty seven fifteen, set the public hearing for July second. At the bottom of the agenda, it indicates that the next council meeting is scheduled for July sixteenth, is that accurate, and do you still want the public hearing to occur on July second?
Uh, let me, did it?
Yeah, that's what we publish it for, with July second. I can contact you about that, Emily, this is Mandy.
Can you hear Mandy, Emily?
I can't hear Mandy, but if, if everything's good, that's fine, I just wanted to point that out in case that wasn't the intention, it was to be at the next council meeting.
Okay, Mandy said she would get in touch with you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
Marcia Slipworth, nine seven one, Highway T fifteen, Pella. Mayor, council, and city administration, thank you all, those that have supported and worked on a wage solution that affects long-term employees. As one of the thirteen percent of the employees at the top of scale, I want to thank you for investing in one of the largest City of Pella commodities. A commodity is defined as useful or valued. While I believe that the top of scale personnel have proven their loyalty to the City of Pella, this incredible investment contributes to retention of employees, because turnover is costly, not only in dollars, but the wellness of employees. Satisfied employees are mentors in the community and the workplace. We can attract better, more qualified employees, we can increase productivity, foster additional loyalty, and we can expand skills and knowledge. While it's not all about money, money is one of the five contributing factors to the science of happiness in the workplace. Thank you again for making a lifetime investment in your commodity. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the city. I know we went through that resolution pretty quickly, but we had a pretty lengthy discussion, council, and we all understand exactly what you're saying, and so we appreciate what Mandy put together for a plan for us to make, make sure everyone was able to get well compensated, so appreciate all our employees, and we understand how important they are. Anyone else?
I got one thing. You're over seventy. As far as the water stagnation, I'd like to see a water aerator in the pond that brings the water up, aerating, and take this number locked through the sledgeboard. I've even donated a thousand dollars for purchase of it. No.
I saw Mike making a bunch of, bunch of notes, so he'll be talking to staff about it.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right, then we're gonna move on to our policy and planning, we have two, two items on the agenda. First one is a partnership agreement with Friends of the Pella Community Center, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Ward stated, decided as to discuss proposed partnership agreement with Friends of the Community Center. As council is well aware, Friends have done its, Yeoman's job as far as raising funds for the proposed renovation to the community center that we have. Now, as far as the project itself, we have an estimated cost, I believe, right around six point eight million, maybe a little north, north of that with the elevator addition that we have, actually seven point eight million with the elevator addition on, and that's why this agreement is, is, is important, when you look at proposed cost upwards of seven point eight million dollars for the renovation of the community center. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the, the main requirements under the agreement with the city's commitment to this is that we're going to engage an engineering firm for design and preliminary cost estimates, we've done that with Shimmer and Associates on this. The Friends of the Community Center will be organizing and fundraising campaign at their cost to assist with the project funding. Now, as a part of this, one of the key items that Friends are going to need to have is the ability to have naming rights for the facility as well. And the way the agreement reads is that they have the ability to offer naming rights for the facility, but they're subject to approval, Island's, the council, and the state's approval should not be unreserved until it's held. And then both parties agree to continue to work for full funding of the project, at which time the agreement may be amended on that as well, and as needed basis. So once again, this is a very generous offer by the Friends of the Pella Community Center, they're offering to conduct a fundraising campaign, they've already raised a significant amount of money for the project. Estimated cost, when you look at the wing addition or the elevator addition on, is just shy of about eight million dollars right in that neighborhood. So fundraising is gonna play a critical part in, in this project on it, and by having a partnership agreement with this, we believe that will actually assist Friends in raising funds for the project as well. So Mandy, do we have any other slides on this side? Okay. It's important to note that the agreement has been drafted and reviewed by the city attorney, and if council directs staff, or I guess, we're looking for this evening, if there's any concerns, potential changes, questions on it, if everyone's okay with the agreement, then we're gonna schedule this for a future council meeting in the near future for formal considerations. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation on this side.
All right, so staffs seeking direction, whether to bring this for a formal vote or not, questions, comments?
I think it's the next, the next step in the process. I think that this agreement is very necessary, they've been very patient with us, and I appreciate that, and I think that moving it forward is the right thing to do.
I agree, this has been going on for a long time, I think part of it was, and this plan is so much better than the plan on the, the original plan on the West End, this, this plan is so much better, have to get this thing moving. It's open, and this is not two million dollars for, we'll save all this specified as a realized agreement, so this, all right for staffs to mention.
All right, seems clear that the council's ready to hold on to approve it, so.
All right. Thank you.
All right, second item on our discussion, up for discussion is ambulance service for Lake Prairie Fire District, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, if you have to explain this, as Mayor Ward stated, nice discussion is regards to fire ambulance service, excuse me, for the Lake Prairie Fire District. A little bit of background on this, City of Pella began operating the Pella Community Ambulance on July first, two thousand and twenty two. The council is aware, the reason why we began operating ambulance is the nonprofit entity ran into financial problems, and when the city council stepped in, and I maintain that was the right decision at the time, ambulance services are the central service for our community. We made a decision to operate the ambulance at that time, now will be inherited, not inherited on this, but one of the items, when we took over the ambulance service, the Pella Community Ambulance had previously provided coverage to the area that's in this red highlighted area. Now, within this red highlighted area, that is Lake Prairie Fire District on it, so Pella Community Ambulance provided service to that, to that area. City took over the service, and once we took over the service, we actually contacted all parties that are proceeding service from the Pella Community Ambulance and talked about plans on a go-forward basis. But when we look at Lake Prairie Fire District, what that consists of, Marion County, is the Lake Prairie Township, Summit Township, on the Mahaska County side, and portions of the Summit Township, if I stand corrected, on the Mahaska County side, I believe the Blackville Township, and then also the Richland Township as well, as well as the City of Lighton. So when you look at our coverage area for the ambulance, we extend all the way down to the City of Lighton, and all the way out to Highway T fourteen, and then south, we extend all the way down to Highway ninety two, and we're at the Jasper County line up here as well, so it's a big coverage area on this. Now, when we took over the service for the ambulance, funding was the key issue, and it's the funding is the issue that we still are struggling with today, as council is well aware. What we talked about with the Lake Prairie Fire District at, at the time was an essential services tax on this. Now, the essential services tax, the ultimate goal was to be able to raise funds or have the ability to tax for the ambulance service within the incorporated areas of both Marion and Mahaska County on this as well. And we discussed it with the Lake Prairie Fire District, and this was a part of a larger discussion that occurred in Marion County. And ultimately, where we landed at in Marion County was what's being proposed is an essential services tax that is technically scheduled to take place in two thousand and twenty five, and that's March of two thousand and twenty five. It was originally scheduled for March of two thousand and twenty four, and that's a key date to keep in mind, because our current agreement was really geared towards an essential services referendum in Marion County that would take place actually this past March, that did not occur, it's been delayed until March of two thousand and twenty five on it. And once again, when we talked about the essential services tax, just to be clear, what we're actually talking about was being proposed at Marion County, it's actually under four twenty two D, and that would be a countywide vote. The City of Pella would actually vote for an additional tax levy as well, in addition to the rural residents in Marion County to pass the essential services tax at sixty percent voter approval as well. Now, there's a different form of essential services tax where the fire district could have just had a vote within the fire district on this as well, that's commonly referred to under three fifty seven, Iowa Code three fifty seven. The reason that that was not only chosen for the Lake Prairie Fire District, but also when we worked with Marion County on it, is that essential services vote would require petition, twenty five percent of the residents within Marion County, or within the fire district, plus twenty five percent of those citizens had to have twenty five percent of property valuation within the district. So this would be similar to what was discussed in Marion County, so what's being proposed instead is a countywide vote, and that's technically scheduled for March of two thousand and twenty five. But that item is very key, as we talked about providing fire ambulance service, excuse me, to this area, because initially, our agreement that we had with the Lake Prairie Township, or the Lake Prairie Fire District, excuse me, was not intended to fully reimburse the City of Pella, what it was intended to do is provide ambulance services until Marion County could actually take and consider the essential services tax referendum, but that has been delayed. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the current agreement, it expires on June thirtieth of this year, and the financial terms that we had under the current agreement, so this would have been first year of the agreement, and that ended on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three, the compensation to the City of Pella to provide ambulance service to the Lake Prairie Fire District was right at thirty six thousand dollars. This current year that's expiring is at forty six thousand dollars. And then I mentioned, one of the items that's key to the ambulance on, from staff's perspective, is the financial contributions from governmental entities, and we're gonna get into this, but one of the items that we've struggled, not only with the Lake Prairie Fire District, but this is true to all the ambulance, I'd say, patients that we serve on it, is when we look at the Pella Community Ambulance, it's important to realize of our billable calls, two thirds of the billable calls are Medicaid and Medicare patients, and the reason why that's significant is on Medicaid, Medicaid, we're tapped at a hundred and fifty dollars right around there, I believe, for reimbursement, Medicare, somewhere right around three hundred and fifty dollars for reimbursement. Every time we roll the ambulance out of the station, its estimated cost is seven hundred and eighty dollars to do so. So when we look at the Lake Prairie Fire District and apply those financial terms on here, usually, since we've been monitoring this and, and running the ambulance, their service calls are somewhere between two hundred and fifty and two hundred and seventy service calls a year. And when we extrapolated this out for this current year, we believe that our total patient revenue, actually, this would have been through April of this year, our total patient revenue was just over forty eight thousand dollars. At the seven hundred and eighty one dollars per service call, the total amount of actual expenses was just over a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars, which left us with the subsidy of just over a hundred thousand dollars, what we have for this area. Now, once again, the current agreement wasn't intended to fully compensate the City of Pella from staff's perspective, and I'll share my perspective, as parties working together. Pella from staff's perspective, and I'll share my perspective, as parties working together tried to provide ambulance service to the Lake Prairie Fire District until Marion County could have an essential services tax vote. That has been delayed, but a full year was scheduled when we approved this agreement for March of 2024. It's been delayed a year now. We believe that essential services tax vote could occur in March of 2025. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Since the vote has been delayed, and since we spent a considerable amount of time working with the Lake Prairie Fire District in negotiating the original agreement, staff made an offer to the Lake Prairie Fire District to extend it for one year with the theory on this is hopefully that would get us out to an essential services tax referendum in Marion County that would occur in March of 2025. And the last offer that we had, or the financial offer that was approved by the city council was for $46,000, so it was the same financial terms. So, it would be $46,000 to provide ambulance service through June 30th of 2025. What we received back from the Lake Prairie Fire District is they stated that they were unable to provide a financial contribution for the ambulance service in 2025, that would be fiscal year, due to the equipment that they needed to purchase for the Pella Rural Fire Department. Now, to explain that, I believe the townships, and I may be a little bit off on this, but they're capped on their emergency services levy, right at 60 cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuations. As it relates to fire, they have to provide fire services, and I believe state laws, state townships don't have to provide ambulance service, but if they choose so, they could provide it out of that 60 cent fire levy on it as well. And that's always been one of the balancing acts that we've worked with the Lake Prairie Fire District on this, is the ambulance and fire component of that as well. We're going to be going through the financials here very soon. Since the Lake Prairie Fire District informed us that they didn't feel they could financially contribute to the ambulance, it was our belief that we were operating under the understanding that they'd still like to have ambulance service provided to them. What we did, in order for the council to make an informed decision on this matter, we pulled the budget documents of all the entities that comprise the Lake Prairie Fire District. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. What we have here is, first, what we have is the estimated cash balances at June 30th of 2025. And for the townships, the four townships, what was in their fire funds was just over $249,000. So, this would be at the end of June 30th, 2025, what they're estimating they're going to have as far as cash on hand. City of Lighten's estimated cash balance was, they're estimating just over $310,000. So, between them, they have roughly, they're estimating $560,000 of cash available now. But they've also informed that they have that dedicated towards future fire purchases on this as well. A little bit more on the financial background, as far as the total taxable property valuations between the townships that we have out there, there's some significant valuations that are located out there, and if council's aware, there's also some significant residential subdivisions that are located within these areas as well. So, we have taxable valuations of just under $378,000. And as far as the townships, and we're not sure how they divvy out who pays what on it and their relationship with City of Lighten, but from the township's perspective, they're levying just under $233,000. Now, based on our review, if they're requesting our service but stating that they don't have the financial means to pay for it, based on our review, we believe they have sufficient cash reserves to pay $46,000 for next year. From our standpoint, we also had to make tough decisions, as council's aware, during the budget season. There were several projects that were either delayed or reordered, and then, not relayed, ordered, but delayed on matters. In addition, we also had to increase our property tax rate for the first time in 22 years as well. So, just based off the cash reserves, and we're assuming that they still want us to provide ambulance service to their, our finding is that they have sufficient cash reserves to pay for the ambulance for one year to get us out to an essential services vote in Marion County. But that's staff's perspective on the matter, so that is not the, Mr. Butler.
Is there, is the town's estimated cash balance their estimate?
Yes. This is their official budget documents that we have, and we also included them in the staff attachments. Okay. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it's also important to understand, and I should have prefaces this, for years, we've worked very successfully with Lake Prairie Fire District, and our goal is to continue to work with the Lake Prairie Fire District. This is a challenging issue on providing ambulance services. Very challenging environment, not only for Pella, the City of Pella, but for anyone, any ambulance provider in the state of Iowa. But it's also important to understand, if you remember that map that we talked about, we not only provide ambulance service to that area, we also provide dispatch service to that area, and our dispatch operating budget was right around, or the deficit, the operating subsidy that we have for dispatch is just shy of $771,000. Approximately 10% of our calls are attributed to the Lake Prairie Fire District out of that. What we also provide is, for years, we've had a very successful relationship where we've shared a fire station on that as well. And with our fire station, we have annual operating expenditures of $35,000. And in addition, as far as water for fires, the city's water system or water system, water utilities provide water for rural fires as well. And what we've had under the fire department budget, if you recall, there's a line item that's $2,900 per year. That's reimbursement's been the same since I've been at the City of Pella, right around $2,900 to $3,000. The reason I'm stating this is we've had a successful partnership with the Lake Prairie Fire District. We're hoping to continue to have a successful partnership with the district in the future, and I think our track history of supporting the fire district is proof up here with dispatch as well as fire, basically, sharing of our fire station as well. In addition, the good faith effort that we had on providing ambulance service over the first two years of our contract with the Lake Prairie Fire District. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we also want to bring council up to speed. If you recall, during our budget deliberations, we spent a significant amount of time talking about ambulance services. And what was included in next year's budget was actually to have a consultant review the operations of the Pella Community Ambulance. And in essence, the reason we asked, and city administration asked for this review, is we continually face manpower needs at the Pella Community Ambulance. This year's no exception. And one of the items that we've had that's led to the financial hardship of the ambulance is it used to be, 20 years ago, the ambulance was operated mainly with volunteers. Because of the call volume increases, finding volunteers is very difficult nowadays, and we've had to transition to more of a full-time staff. Currently, chief, we have a staff of 14?
For full-time, yes.
14 on there. Even with the staff of 14, chief, we're upwards on the part-time employees that we need to fully operate two ambulances. How many hours is that roughly?
About 160.
160 hours on this. What's led to the staffing challenges is when you operate an ambulance, is you have your full-time staff, and if you can get the volunteers to cover that 160 hours, everything's great. If you can't, that's where things get interesting financially, and that means you're paying overtime for full-time staff to cover these shifts, which has been a significant issue this year. The second item that we have, if you recall the map and the service area, is we operate a Bay Area. The longer we are out on calls, that increases the probability that there's going to be another call during that time, that we have to call in staff to cover shift, to have two ambulances available on that as well. So, the bigger your service territory, the more people you need. One of the items that we have for the ambulance was request for personnel, specifically what the ambulance asked city administration was for two more full-time paramedics. The estimated cost on the paramedics is about $150,000, so a paramedic's right around $75,000. From my perspective, and I'll just speak from my perspective, the issue that I have is it's very difficult to know how big that staff should be, how much equipment that we should have out there. When I'm talking about equipment, is right now, we're operating two full-time ambulances, but based on their call volume, they're right around 2,200 service calls on it. I don't know if that really requires a third ambulance on it, and if so, that's additional staffing. So, what we were hired the consultant to look at was how big of a staff and what equipment did we have if we just operated inside the City of Pella? We also had a second item, how big of a staff and how much equipment do we have if we serve the Lake Prairie Fire District? And then, the third item that we wanted to look at was if we performed transport services for Pella Regional Hospital. Now, currently, we're serving the 911 calls of both these items, and for the most part, we are operating transports. However, the transports have been on an as-needed, resources-available basis. And there are certain times where we would ask staff that we couldn't perform transport services, and we've informed the hospital on this as well. So, that was the goal of the consultant, is to look at this as well. And then, as far as the city's operating deficit that we have, we've also hired the consultant to look at how we can reduce our operating deficit on a go-forward basis. And so, those are the recommendations that the consultant will be making to the City of Pella. We anticipate having their draft report by the end of this month. I would also like to state for the record, we've not only been dealing with the Lake Prairie Fire District, but we've also been dealing with Pella Regional Hospital on transport services. Pella Regional has made a financial offer for the City of Pella to currently at the staff level to provide transport services as well. So, this continues to be a work in progress from our standpoint. But the big item from our consultant's report, we anticipate having the draft report at the end of this month.
Who's the consultant?
Chief. Who is the consultant?
Iowa EMS consultants. They're based out of Council Labs.
Iowa what?
Iowa EMS consultants. Their most recent consultant review, they have a panel, I believe, was close to here, but for now, it's going to a full-time service.
Do they comment on, do they comment on full-timeness in all of those type of conferences our staff goes?
They have informed me that the study will probably show that we need several full-time employees.
Do they comment on transport vehicle and transport staff as well?
That will be, yes.
So, once again, the intention is, we're not operating an ambulance. City staff, city administration believes this is an essential service on it. It's important to our citizens. We need to make sure for essential services that they're fully staffed and fully funded on this standpoint. The issue is, is how big of a staff do we need to serve each one of these categories on it as well? And so, that's kind of a nice segue into our third, our next slide. So, Mandy, now, as we look at ambulance in the future, what I would tell council, I believe firmly, funding is going to be critical on the matter. And we believe until we're able to get, at least in Marion County, a referendum on the essential services tax, which is in March of 2025, we're going to serve outside at the City of Pella, perform hospital transport. It's going to require all parties, and when I talk about all parties, City of Pella and any other entity that's utilizing the ambulance work together. And that's the intention that we had when we made the offer to the Lake Prairie Fire District. Now, with this, what we have, if Lake Prairie feels they're unable to financially contribute to the ambulance for next year, which they've informed staff, if that continues to be their position, what we have up here, and these are three options. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, and I'm going to preface, we're not looking for direction to take options tonight on it. And I'm going to cover my recommendation here very, very soon on the matter, but we want to make sure everyone's well aware of what the options are. Option number one, and we're talking about next year on this, and so this would be the fiscal year that would start on July 1st, is continue to provide the same level of ambulance services to Lake Prairie Fire District as currently provided to the City of Pella residents on it. So, we will continue to incur additional expenses covering the service territory and the status quo. And our intention is, as long as there's progress for an essential services tax, but as soon as there's a decision, either if the tax is not scheduled for the ballot, or whatever the decision is, on March 25th, we're going to reconvene and reconsider our position at that time. So, that's option number one. Option number two would be to provide ambulance services to the Lake Prairie Fire District if only resources are available. So, this would be very similar to what we're currently doing with hospital transports on it. Specifically, what we would have is ambulances dedicated to the City of Pella. If we have resources and if we can answer the 911 call, we'll go take the call. But if we don't, then we're not going to be able to answer that 911 call. Since we may not be able to answer all the 911 calls because we don't have the resources to do so, what we would pose is that the dispatch operations be turned over to the respective counties. Now, we've already had meetings with the sheriff's department in Marion County. They operate the dispatch for Marion County, and the Mahaska County EMA, I believe, operates Mahaska County's EMA as well. And we've already informed him that this may be an option as well. Now, from a technology standpoint, there are some challenges on the matter, and that's important to keep in mind, but it's not, it's not doable. They feel that they have the ability to do it. A big issue that when we talk to the dispatch is, they would like to know who they're supposed to call in case of a 911 and we can't answer it. That's probably the big issue that they'll have to work out if we choose this option on it as well. But it'd be very similar to what we currently do with hospital transports on it. We perform transport services if we have resources on it. And option number three, and I want to make sure everyone realizes, I'm not recommending this at this time, would be, as we disturb within the City of Pella on it, but we are not making that recommendation at this time. But those are the three options that council may have. Now, before we get into staff's recommendation, is there any questions on council on these three options?
What happens now if both of our ambulances are busy, somewhere we get another call? Then what happens?
Well, I'm going to try to let chief answer that, but the two people that we have back there, chief and assistant chief, are on call a lot, and they come in a lot on the third ambulance. So, from my understanding, we try to call in full-time people on the third ambulance. If they're not there, we're calling either a chief or assistant chief. So, what we're doing now, to answer your question, the Councilman Butler, is probably not sustainable on the long run because we rely on both these individuals for the third ambulance constantly.
So, we have three vehicles.
Yeah. Chief, did I miss a speak on that?
No, you're right on the mic. We have three ambulances, and two of them are staffed. And that third one, I would say probably 80% of the time is Mandy and I, and the other 20% is we're paying overtime for our full-time staff that live here in town to come in. And we are, we are getting close to burnout, so the amount of times that we're all coming in.
And how much revenue are coming on this, on the essential services tax in our service area?
Well, this is, I'm going to try to give you my laymams. That's all dependent on the rec, what's actually approved by the board of supervisors in the distribution formula, so we're going to have to continue to evaluate it. We've made recommendations, the City of Knoxville and the City of Pella have made recommendations on the distribution formula that we think is fairly equitable, but also provide coverage to all entities in Marion County on it. But again, that's up to the supervisors, so there's a lot to be determined between now and a potential referendum date in March.
So, Greg, just to follow up on, if, if both our ambulances are, say, all three of them are, we do rely, Knoxville relies on Pella, Pella relies on Knoxville some, right?
Yep. And most of the time, it's Knoxville's coming over for us, or we're going to Knoxville. The problem that we have is Knoxville's gotten just as busy as we are. Mahaska is our, is our next step, and they've gotten just as busy. Everywhere is getting more busy. My biggest fear is, we've had a couple times in the last year where we've called for Knoxville, and Knoxville can't come over. We've called for Mahaska, and Mahaska couldn't come over. We called for Monroe, we're waiting for them to get volunteer service to come over. In that meantime, we've had 45 minutes where if something happened, I don't know that we would have had a response because we've just been too busy and spread too thin.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that there, there is some interdependence here within Marion County. Knoxville helps Pella, Pella helps Knoxville. There's, what, six other small ambulance services in Marion County? So, they all are currently relying on each other in instances. So, that's part, you know, it's not just our three. There is some crossover between services.
Put that in round numbers, about, Pella and Knoxville's about an equal trade-off. We're right around 100 times a year we call Knoxville. We're down to Knoxville either, both. We didn't have, the two cities weren't working together, we would have had a third ambulance in service by now without that. So, that's a key savings for us, and we really help each other out with our manpower when we can.
Also, go ahead, go ahead.
There are three counties.
There, there are three counties in Iowa that are currently, uh, working with, uh, a program that Lieutenant Governor, uh, Greg Abbott, isn't it right? No, Adam.
Grant, right, yes.
Um, discovered when he went to Israel, it's called United Haasala. And, but it is, is, in brief, is volunteers with backpacks that have communication system to respond quickly. Uh, so they can get to, so when the call comes into the, the center, they can see where the call's coming from and they can determine who's in the area. I mean, there's a volunteer with his backpack. Now, the backpack can't do much, but it can stop a bleed or turn a kid or at least get somebody there, uh, to quickly. And in Israel, their average response time is ninety seconds. And so with our county being, you know, the ambulance might take fifteen, twenty minutes to get there, but there might be somebody close that could get there and, and begin to analyze and communicate with the ambulance that's coming. And it's, it's the volunteer, I don't know if they pay the volunteers for the call, don't believe that, but Cast County, Calvin County and Van Buren County are running this program. And, and the gov, Lieutenant Governor threw, uh, has promoted it to them. And I talked, I talked to Cast County and he said the, uh, the guy that's the director there, I can't recall his name. Uh, he said he was in on one of the very first calls and they got there within a couple minutes. And they had to sit the guy up. If you'd have laid there until the ambulance got there, you'd have died. So it's, it's a, it's a quick responder. It's not, it won't cover everything, but it will cover a lot of things, I think. So I think, I think there's some others possible things that happen that can help us save people and not, and not, uh, I don't know, now, I, I know when the 911 call comes in, an ambulance has to go every time. You can't avoid it. Um, but anyway, our goal is to save lives and I, I think it's an interesting program.
I think Greg is probably pretty familiar with that.
I, I am, and, and that's not going to change anything here. Um, currently I have, um, nine individuals that live in townships and we all have radios. We all hear where that call comes out. If it's next to Sarah Turnbull's house, she's going. If it's next to Sydney on Aaron Dog's house, she's going. They're already there before the ambulance gets there. It's no different than what's currently, than what that would be.
Okay, well, uh, possibly we have a few more people there.
Possibly, but again, it's one of those things that's all, there's no guarantees with that. It's all depends on, if Sarah's not home, nobody's getting there. The, that person, whoever has that bag doesn't, isn't home, they're still not getting there. There's no guarantees to it.
That's why, that's why you need more volunteers and they don't have to be EMTs.
For, for twenty-three hundred calls a year, it's very hard to get volunteers.
And also public, I mean, I touched on briefly that, but why are you unable to say, hey, you're really needing ambulance dispatch? Can't adjust to this stuff that's, once called at that day, they just, I've got a ton of resources. They don't have to pop. You can see also losing proposition and how the government has to take it over, but I think it's all levels of government that we need to take it over. Not this is, not this is a citizen, uh, Pella. I hope, I hope this party's going to continue to work together, um, compromise is the, is the usual best you know what it is.
Mike, remind me, um, is there not a new ambulance committee that's been formulated? Did there, I know there was one, it worked out with public health department and then did it, didn't a new committee form? And if, if so, how long have they been working together?
Well, I, I think as far as the official appointment, Mayor and Chief Greg helped me out. There was one committee that was an ad hoc committee that worked on the essential services tax. It's gone on a year and a half.
Something like that.
Two years.
Right.
They made that.
Right.
They made that, they made.
We have now the essential services tax.
No, no.
Well, we're going to vote on it.
They have supervisors.
Resolution. Did they then, was that committee then disbanded and a new committee formed is my question?
That commit, that committee is disbanded.
Okay.
That was not really, that was just for discussion.
Right.
Once the supervisors vote to declare it essential service, which they did.
They did.
But I think there's still, is there one more follow-up they have to do?
Yeah, they, they voted on a two-to-one vote on essential services during a policy and planning segment. The formal vote is sixty days.
So once, once that, but once they actually approved it so far, that just a policy and planning, they said they were going to.
Okay.
Once they make it an essential service, declare it essential service, then there's a committee that's formed to go through the process of, uh, discussing what the levy rate would be, how it would be distributed, all of that to reach, to recommend back to the board supervisors, who in turn have to approve it, the ballot language to go through. So, so that committee doesn't exist yet.
Yet.
But it will.
Okay.
Well, assuming that they approve it.
Right.
Now, they're not officially approved yet. They've indicated they're going to, they haven't done yet.
So somebody on the board actually voted against calling ambulance an essential service?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that it was against calling it essential service. It was, the crux of it was to raise taxes, didn't want to raise taxes. Whatever.
Don't call 911.
Whatever, that's, that's, you know, that's the world we live in, so.
Mike, do you want to remind me, you asked, and why was it delayed a year? Was that some technicality? What happened there?
Yeah. I, keep in mind, this committee was an ad hoc committee and their initial recommendation was whether it should be an essential service or not. That was the recommendation they were looking at and where the committee spent a lot of time on. And there were a lot of people that worked very hard on this committee was on the distribution formula. And Chief, I'm probably a little off. As far as Marion County, how many EMS departments are there in Marion County?
Thirteen, I believe.
So you had thirteen entities that were talking about a distribution. So you had Pella, Knoxville, Miltredow, this whole gamut of small and where the, where the conversation gravitated down to was the distribution. That's what the committee spent most of its time on. That's what, what matters were, were delayed on it. And that's very difficult to work out. And so the supervisors were to approve the essential service or designate an essential service. They'd have a committee that would work on the distribution and what would actually be presented to the voters on the ballot in March.
So the party on the determination at committee level was then made tardy in the supervisors, which made it off a year.
Yes.
The other eleven months that can't meet.
I, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't call it tardy. I, I would call it a massive disagreement about distribution of the tax once it was levied. And so that committee kind of just fell apart.
You just, if they were multiple times in this, etc., etc., we see this upstate for township. I think the city's shown a lot of good faith in this and I hope that other parties involved have responded well.
So Mayor, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and wrap up with my, our recommendation is, is, once again, we've had a positive relationship with the Lake Prairie Fire District that we believe all parties are going to need to work together. We're going to provide ambulance cir, service. And again, if we're looking at subsidizing areas outside the city of Pella, before we get into this, we got to have an endpoint on what is the goal we have. And we've traditionally targeted that essential services vote in Marion County as our goal. And so for right now, we're still targeting that as we consider our, our options in this matter. But what we're recommending for council is to formally delay a decision on providing ambulance services to Lake Prairie Fire District to July 16th. This would allow council a review of the consultant's recommendation, what they have on it. So we'd have the facts from the consultant hopefully by that date. We've established, right now we have listed as July 2nd for Lake Prairie. I don't know if they, they're going to reconsider their position, but if they, if they do, they can get us a proposal by July 2nd. We'd appreciate it. If they don't, that's fine on, on the matter. And what we would also do as far as our recommendation, so we're going to be on July 16th. Now, the dates that we've talked about, if council were to choose option number two in the matter, which is serve the district, and this is assuming that there's not going to be a financial contribution from the Lake Prairie Fire District for ambulance services for next year. Council were to choose to serve the district, if we have available resources, if we can do it. If we don't, um, the respective counties are going to have to figure out who goes on the 911 call. We've talked to both dispatch centers on it and we've talked about at that time that it'd be at least until September 1st before there's any September, any service levels that changes on that and that, that would go in. And they were both fine with that as far as we know, but we continue to work with them. The last item that we have, so again, we're going to defer this till July 16th. And we just wanted to make sure that we had here in the last item, as council's aware of, we're currently reviewing rental rates, user fees for the city of Pella. We said that we're going to do that during the budget session. If Lake Prairie is, uh, in a position to contribute for ambulance services, we intend to contact them on the fire station rent, um, arrangement that we have on it. And again, the rental rate hasn't been increased for over twenty-some years and we want to look at it at least after the conversations with them. But we just also want to make sure there's no miscommunication in this matter. This probably won't be done before July 16th on it, but we want to make sure council's aware that we're going to contact them and talk about the arrangements that we have at the fire station. So that's our official recommendation, Mayor. More than happy to answer any questions council may have. But that's really, uh, when we're looking for direction, we'd like to get helpful spots on these three items.
I'll throw a third one in the mix. March 2025 is a drop dead date for this referendum thing. Ambulance services to continue in this area service by Pella, it's open. I mean, there's got to be a fire under some people to get this moving. And that's just by me. If the re, referendum passes with us, the tax.
It's our understanding the tax would be getting elections on July 1st, 2025. So it'd be during our next budget, um, that we would have.
Is that including all the high-level battling over the distribution formula?
Excuse me?
Is that including all the high-level battling over the distribution formula? That seems opti, over the optimistic.
Well, to go on the ballot. To go on the ballot, that distribution formula has to be finalized on it. And so all the work leading up to March by that committee is going to be on there. So we're going to be monitoring it, uh, still on there.
Before, uh.
Yeah.
What are the considerations of the distribution?
Well, the considerations from our standpoint, I'd ask Chief Greg and the mayor to chime in on it. We have to make sure, we're going to look at if it's being proposed a sixty-five cent tax. We're going to look at how much is being generated by the city of Pella. That's first and foremost on it. And what are our ultimate revenue that we receive at the city of Pella? That's going to be our first, first concern. The second item that we have is if we're going to be out, serving outside of Pella, we need to make sure that we're adequately compensated, that we can afford the staff and actually do the service outside of Pella because it won't do anyone any good on the distribution formula. That if we don't have enough revenue to serve the areas outside of Pella on it, then there's going to be, there could be potential issues. So those are going to be the two items that we're, we're going to take a look at hard on it. But again, um, there's, Chief Greg said, there's fourteen entities in Marion County and I'm sure they're going to be looking at it from their perspective as well, so.
Well, since it's a property-type tax, it would seem to me that if the property is in the service district, that's where the money would go. It would seem that's straightforward.
Sure does. It sure does and you put twenty-two people in a room and start talking about that, it gets all, all awry.
Well, okay. Just want to make sure.
You, you've got it figured out. It's convincing a lot of other people, that's true. So is everybody okay with this timeline and we'll recon, reconvene?
Longer the key.
In the meantime, we'll continue to provide the service until July 16th anyway, the way we are right now.
Yes.
Okay.
If I could have just a few minutes of Greg's time, could you talk to me a little bit about transport? I mean, we get to see a lot of numbers, but the real essence of it, my, my neighbor's father or son, they had a cardiac issue. The guy got transported to Waterloo to find a cardiac bed. I mean, is this kind of nonsense common?
Yes, uh, hospital beds are, hospitals are understaffed. They've got rooms that are open, but they don't have staff to put people in rooms. So, uh, they're taking him to Waterloo or wherever. So, um, we're not, our, our transport times are longer. You know, that Waterloo trip, there's no direct route to Waterloo. In fact, sixty-three is closed between Grinnell and Tama for road construction. So that even complicates it more. So that Waterloo trip took over five hours and our crew was out of town. Um, you know, and, and the hospital had called for other transfer while the crew was out of town. I couldn't take that one. Um, and so the hospital gets mad at me quite often because I have to look out for the city, uh, to keep my resources here and I can't stretch them too thin. Um, so there, we're doing a lot of that. It's, it's not the amount of transfers, it's the amount of time my, my ambulances are away, uh, when we're getting busier and busier. That's, that's really the, the crux of what, what we're doing with now. In the hospitals, it's not a quick transfer anymore. It's Waterloo and Iowa City and, um, wherever they can find a bed.
Does it make a difference to the Mercy System or the Unity Point System?
Nope, no difference.
What about working relationship with our hospital?
As far as.
I mean, to put you on this.
I, you mentioned Higginbotham and the hospital is a bad word. Um, it, it is really because I've had to make a stand to keep services here and I can't service everything that they, they want me to do.
And do they pay for what they want you to do?
No. And just for, for your information, we lost forty-six thousand dollars in transfers last year because there's been a big slide to, we're more Medicaid and Medicare transfers versus the Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we're losing one of those transfers as well.
Thank you.
I would like to add, Pella Regional Hospital has made a financial proposal to the city of Pella for, for services. And we're currently evaluating that and we intend to have that in front of council here soon.
Well, this is an area, we're there with this top and bottom problems, right? If you have a hierarchical plan, which probably ensures typically union, you're making that decision and calling an ambulance is a whatever. I'm a guy myself, leaving to, you know, whatever it is. So I think that's shaping the, uh, that answer, who's calling for these things as well. As well as demographics of all day, so very complex file. And COVID.
Yep. Which was everybody left in the healthcare fields.
And nurses quit, there are the nurses quit and a lot of you guys.
I lost half my staff, does anyone respond?
That's all the U S, yeah, it was costly, what is?
I, I just want to reiterate what Mike said, because I've been in on a couple of discussions with the hospital. They are, they are making some effort to figure out how to help with the situation. Um, something that I don't think we probably got before. So there is some willingness, there's some, I think it's a good example of how, this is a major problem for rural Marion County, for the city of Pella, for the hospital and everybody, for our staff. And if we can't figure out how to try to work it together to make it better, then we're not going to make it better. So a lot of these decisions are going to be important moving forward. We all have to, we're all going to have to give up something probably.
Just as a point of interest, I did a little calculation here. Israel has seven thousand volunteers. So for the density, uh, based on square miles, we need about four hundred and fifty volunteers. Then there'd be somebody available to respond to their call. Volunteers, volunteer, key word. But I, I have to raise the question in our, in our society, what about liability?
And I think the Pella ambulance service has a forty-year track record of having volunteers that ran it and, uh, in the last five. that ran in, in the last five. So that, that system worked for a long time. Okay, anything else?
Not related to this, I should have brought this up earlier. When I'm out there, I get pickleball fans constantly bringing that thing up. However, just very recently, I've had two calls from Kauanis people. The whole Wunder Spellen thing, you know, has kind of built up the Kauanis tennis court, because that thing has been there for so long. And the people that live right around Kauanis, you know, have been endeared to that Kauanis tennis court for a long, long time. And people are still seeing kids come with bicycles, with tennis rackets, and not realizing they can't play. And there are adults still coming along, you know, by car, and realizing they can't. So I had, I had one lady in tears, you know, that, you know, her tennis, her tennis racket, that, you know, her tennis courts, that's always been there. But I, you know, I still, you know, earlier in the preliminary thing, we, you know, the whole Kauanis demolition, I think we have to do something with the, with the Kauanis thing. But when we went to this Wunder Spellen, the next phase, I think that really got some people that live around the Kauanis Park area, you know, not that they're upset with, with that next phase, but they're saying, you know, this has been added, but how come nothing's been done with the Kauanis courts? There are a lot of people in that area very upset that nothing has happened with that for a long time now. We have to do something about that. And especially, I had, like I say, two calls just in the last week about that Kauanis tennis court from the locals, people that live, it's just a few houses from there. One right across the street.
On the, on a brighter note for pickleball, the Caldwell Park courts got resurfaced. I texted a couple of the pickleball people. I said, what do you think about the new surface? It's great, we like it. My response was, if you pickleballers are happy, it's got to be good.
Where are we on the central courts? What's the timeline?
They've got. We have, I mean, we haven't talked about it yet, it's going to be on.
They've taped off, I have six courts. They have four portable nets available, and there are a number of people that bring their own. It's not a big expense to have a pickleball net.
Right, we can spread some of those around town. We're going to have some happy folk. That's all I have. The, like, we can call it pickleballers.
You got better words?
No, it's, it's certainly helpful.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Brandon Horst, DeYoung. All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Manny, please call it all.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl still?
Yes.